Let's, let's start. This is a joint special meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council and Planning Commission. It's Wednesday, May twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty one at six P M. And I'll ask the city clerk to give us a roll call of both bodies, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Peak?
Here.
Council members Emilio?
Here.
Coletti?
Here.
McAdams? Paduri?
Yeah.
Tomlinson?
Present.
Chair Lilly?
Here.
And Commissioners Aishleman?
Here.
Bloom?
Here.
Boyle? Jackwin?
Present.
And Sawyer?
Here.
Absent from the meeting thus far is Councilmember Smith, Commissioners Byrne, and Boyle, and Councilmember McAdams. I, I do see Commissioner Boyle joining and Councilmember McAdams, so I will mark them present.
All right, thank you very much. Our second item on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask Chair Lilly to please do the honors.
Thank you.
So if you all rise, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands,
which it stands.
under God. Our agenda is very simple tonight, one item, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Emilio, second, maybe we have a roll call vote for the agenda, please.
Yes, Mayor. Commissioner Sawyer?
Aye.
Backman?
Aye.
Boyle?
Aye.
Bloom?
Aye.
Aishleman?
Aye.
Chair Lilly?
Aye.
Councilmembers Tomlinson?
Aye.
Paduri?
Aye.
McAdams? Coletti?
Aye.
Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries twelve zero.
Thank you. The item on the agenda tonight is PG Welcome Home: Creating an Affordable Future. As it's a study session, and I'll turn it promptly over to Ms. Terry Schaefer, our senior program manager. Ms. Schaefer, welcome again.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Peak, and good evening and welcome to members of our city council, honorable Planning Commission Chair Lilly, planning commissioners, members of the public, city staff, and our esteemed colleagues from Baird and Driscoll Community Planning. This evening's joint session is a culmination of our work on the city's housing initiative known as Welcome Home: Creating an Affordable Future. Should be noted that community members formed a housing advisory group that have contributed hours of time and effort in discussing and providing feedback on much of what will be presented to you this evening. And staff appreciates all of those contributions. Additionally, the work that started a year ago has been led by the highly skilled team at Baird and Driscoll Community Planning. It is our hope that city council members and planning commissioners will use this joint study session to discuss the proposed strategies for achieving affordable housing goals and help staff plan for future action items. David Driscoll, the principal and co-founder of Baird and Driscoll, has led such projects as numerous housing elements, general plans, community development strategies, and policy projects. He was also the City of Boulder, Colorado's Executive Director for Planning, Housing, and Sustainability for seven years, and the City of Seattle's Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development for four years. And it's been a privilege working with him. So David, you can take it away.
Thanks, Terry, and good to see everybody. I had the pleasure of talking with many of you in the fall, and it's nice to be back and seeing new faces as well. I am going to share my screen and walk through a presentation. I hope and get through it in about fifteen, twenty minutes. Want to make sure we cover the ground and give a little bit of background. I'm not going to go into things that we talked about the last name, which was a lot of the housing background data and more detail on what we heard in the community outreach. But I am going to try to achieve our objective, which is talk about some of the, well, the priority actions that have been identified through the process and with the Housing Advisory Group and staff. Answer your questions, hear your feedback, and ask for guidance specifically, in particular, on the near-term actions, which we will then work on to bring back in the form of ordinance. We'll talk about what those near-term actions are, and then also what is prioritizing to queue up as next steps after that. So mostly it's going to be focused on what are the actions that has risen to the top through the conversations with the advisory group and staff and through the community input process. We had a long list, and we've been able to boil it down to what we think are the most important things to work on at this point in time. I just wanted to say a big thank you to the Housing Advisory Group members. They're listed here. I'm not going to read off all the names, but it's a great diverse group of perspectives, members of the school district, elected officials, folks from local employers, and then just different interest groups, Realtor backgrounds and other things. So a nice set of perspectives. And a big shout out and thanks to the staff team that have been great to work with, huge knowledge base in terms of Pacific Grove and what works there and some of the history. I'm going to just talk a little bit about what is this project about, particularly for those folks who are listening in and may not have participated so far. So this is focused on, on action. The conversation, the very first meeting was, we don't want to just want to come up with a plan. We want to actually get some things done. So that's what this is about, and it is focused on creating new housing options. So there's a number of things also related to housing rehabilitation, other things. There have been part of the conversation, but that isn't really the focus of this effort. This is about responding to the challenge of affordability and creating some new options. And certainly, housing exists within the sort of larger context of the, of the community's economic, environmental, and social well-being. That has been an important context for all the work that we're doing. This is the project webpage. We're going to be doing a refresh of that in the coming days and uploading this updated document and notes from this evening's feedback session, and then doing an email blast out and inviting people to give us feedback on the draft.
Excuse me, Mr. Driscoll?
Yeah.
We're only seeing your Welcome Home page still.
Huh.
There's more.
Yeah, there's a lot more. I'm going through the slide here. Good now? Huh. I'm going to stop sharing and try again.
I was following along on my own copy.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, I've never had that happen before. Let me try one more time. Can you see? It should have the title slide, Joint City Council Planning Commission Study Session up?
Yes.
Yeah?
And no, you're on slide number one.
It's on the left on my screen.
What are you seeing now?
What?
Nothing.
Are you building?
Huh.
Are you building a slide or should be a complete slide? There we go.
Well, it's a complete slide. No, I've got the slide. It's in Google Slides, which we found.
In the presentation. Probably not in presentation.
Okay, hold on. Stop sharing. I'm going to close down my other windows. I guess that's causing a problem. Okay, let's try this one more time. Are you seeing that? Maybe just want to go to present note that it's left full screen now?
Yes.
Three one.
And did that change?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
That's a good one.
You shouldn't be seeing the objectives for tonight. So if what I'm saying out of my mouth isn't matching what's on the screen, just give me a holler. Okay, so I talked about the objectives. This is the agenda I'm going to walk through. And it's, it's pretty much mirrors the document. And folks listening in, there is a PDF of the strategy document. You can access it through a link that's on the city council agenda page. This is the list of our great housing advisory group. Again, I'm not going to read it out. They're listed in the document as well, and a big thanks to all of them, the staff team. And now I'm going to go into the project overview. So this is the purpose statement for this project effort, the Welcome Home Initiative. This is, we set up a, what's called a tiny URL link that makes it easier to get to the Housing Initiative page, but I just recently tested. If you just Google Housing Initiative, Pacific Grove, you'll get this at the top of your Google search, and just click on that too. And we'll be updating that page in the coming couple of days or early next week. Just want to call out, this is funded through, the state has a number of different funding programs that are supporting housing planning. There's the SB two grant, which is paying for this effort. The city staff also applied for and received additional funds. Leap and reap grants, which will support implementation work, and also next year's housing element update. And also a really great, they received a hundred and twenty thousand dollars through a competitive grant process to support local housing development. So and the state recently announced they're actually putting more resources into supporting affordable housing development around the state. So that's all good news. Let's talk a little bit, and there's the intro to the document that walks through like, why are we doing this and why does affordability matter? Just, I'm just going to highlight a few points from that. And, and the first is that while we think about, yeah, we're creating housing for people who need affordable housing, and those people are an important part of this conversation. It's really important for all of us. And there, there is this point that not having affordability in the community has huge reverberations in terms of the economic well-being of the community, the diversity and social well-being, and really in the long run, not having affordability affects everyone in the community. These are some of the words that we heard. We had two places where we asked people, what, what's, what's your vision of the community you want to be in? And one was at a live workshop in the fall, and then there was a online open house. And so altogether, there's about two hundred folks who filled this out and gave us input, and you can see the kinds of words that come to mind when we asked them, safe, welcoming, inclusive, affordable. These are the kinds of things that people think about when they think about the kind of community they want Pacific Grove to be. Context in terms of thinking about housing, I, all of us think about the house we're in, and sort of that's what housing is. But, you know, as you look around the community of Pacific Grove, there's actually a right nice diversity of housing types that exist in the community that have been built over time. Community started as tent cabins, and then over time, different types of housing came up, came up. An important part of what we'll talk a little bit about later, and we talked about the last study session, is we used to allow a lot more diversity of housing types than we do under our current zoning. And that's something that we may want to look at changing if we want to create more and diverse housing choices. How do we define affordability? There's a pretty simple equation, which is used to at the federal and state levels to define affordability. So it's basically your gross income times thirty percent is what you can afford on housing, and that includes reasonable payments for utilities and other housing-related expenses. But mostly, it's your rent or your mortgage payment. What does that translate into in terms of actual monthly mortgage or rent payments? These are just some examples. These are actual salaries from people working in your community. So there's people who make more than this in each of these categories and people who make less. So a police officer making a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year can afford close to three thousand dollars a month on housing. I'm not going to read them all off. You can read them on the screen. Hopefully, you can see the screen. But down to, you know, at the lower level, twenty four thousand dollars a year if you're a restaurant worker, and you can afford six hundred dollars a month on housing. So the thing is, in, in Pacific Grove, that's important, and this is not just Pacific Grove, a lot of communities like you, you have a lot of service workers, and service workers do not make a lot of money. So when you think about affordable housing for a big chunk of your workforce, it's out of reach. So this is a big part of the conversation. We're not talking about serving people who aren't in the community today. These are people who are in the community every day, working, who can't afford to be here. So, and, and the two-thirds of the workforce making less than forty thousand dollars a year, a lot of them make less, significantly less than that. I know that's why people hold multiple jobs, and also why people double up, triple up in housing or go afford things. Here's the rents. Again, there's, this is sort of, it's going to vary based on the size of unit, where it's located, what the quality of it is. But Renton Pacific Grove is, is well over sixteen, seventy hundred dollars a month for a family-sized unit. I'm sorry, for a typically unit, more expensive for a family-sized unit. And ownership is particularly unaffordable for many people. So one, you have to come up with a down payment, and then even then, if you got a hundred percent down payment, a median price charge is going to cost more than forty five hundred dollars a month in your mortgage payment. So if you look back at what people are making and what they can afford, most, for most people who work in Pacific Grove, housing is out of reach. And what the market wants to deliver is expensive housing, because you've got highway costs, construction costs are going up. And so there was market pressure to create high-cost housing, and that's what, you know, developers will build, because that's what we'll pay for all those costs. And that's why we're having this discussion of what can we do to create more affordability. We talked in this, in this project so far, we've talked about creating more affordability. So there is a relative affordability. But when I use the term affordable housing, what we typically are talking about is creating housing that meets that mark of someone is living in it paying thirty percent or less of their income on the housing. And you have one example of, of a larger affordable housing development. That's the Vista Point Senior Housing Development that's on the screen here. That serves seniors and provides them rents at a rent they can afford based on their income. So they still pay rent, and they pay up thirty percent of their income. But it's lower than what they would, yeah, they're paying less than they would pay if they're out in the market. And that's run by a nonprofit housing developer. It was built by one nonprofit housing developer currently managed by a company. The other example on the screen here is what's called an accessory dwelling unit. I'm going to talk a little bit about those, but those are an example of something that's not necessarily subsidized. It's not managed by a nonprofit. A single homeowner would build an ADU and their, other property could be inside their home or outside, detached from their home. And those tend to sell for relatively more affordable. And we got some data that actually a number of them in the market are performing at moderate and lower income rent levels. So the question we talked about the last time we got together is, how much do we need? And who do we need to serve? We will have numbers next year in terms of what the state and region says is our regional housing needs allocation. But we'll talk about that in the future. That gives us actual numbers to build for, but, and so there's, there's the, the arena, the regional housing needs allocation numbers. And then there's that number I showed, which is like, you've got thousands of people who are working here who can't afford to be here. We're not going to be able to build housing for all those people. And many of them wouldn't choose to live there because in Pacific Grove, because they live in other communities that they're a part of, and they commute, and maybe their spouse or partner works up in Santa Cruz, and they work in Pacific Grove. And anyway, it's hard to put a number. We can come up with a number and make some assumptions. But really, what we're trying to do is, is to make some progress and create some affordability, more affordability, and affordable units in particular, to serve the folks who are shown here and others. So your workforce is critical. Seniors, you have a number of, and the document goes into this a little bit more, a number of seniors who are fixed income, and many of them are renters. And so as they get priced out, they are looking for places to stay in a community that they love and are part of already. And then you also have your children and grandchildren. And if you saw those incomes that were shown on earlier slides, you could get a pretty good job as a recent graduate and still not be able to afford to be in Pacific Grove. So how can we create some opportunities for those folks to stay in town? And folks who work here to also be able to live here? So that's what, that's the reason we're doing this action plan, is to create some affordable housing opportunities. Just some points here. I'm not going to go through all of them, but, you know, obviously, we want to look at what's worked in Pacific Grove in the past, and how can we build on those successes? And then also look at sort of some of the new challenges that have been emerging and how to respond to those. There's not any silver bullet. Nothing's going to solve this. It's going to take effort. It's going to take changes in regulations. It's going to take money. So it's, we're looking for a suite of strategies that we can implement that will make a difference. I'm going to talk through four, top four areas of action. Just highlight quickly some things that are already underway that the city's been working on. Focus in particular on the near-term actions, which we'll be looking for your direction in terms of coming back to you with some ordinances. Some midterm actions that would happen in the coming year, particularly in conjunction with the housing element update. And then some really important things that, and just because they're number four doesn't mean they're not important, but some things that are, that are going to take some effort in planning in order to help make happen what those are. So two things that are already in action, accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and promoting home sharing. And this is things we talked about in the advisory group and some of the public outreach. Just quickly, home sharing is, and you have a lot of people in Pacific Grove that fit this. An older person who is in a big house with some empty rooms, they want to stay in town. They might need or want to have an extra income stream. There's a service that helps them match up with someone who's looking for a rent to rent. So there's social benefits, there's economic benefits, there's housing benefits. It's not for everybody, but it is, it works for some people, and there's an organization that now is operating in the region, and the city is helping promote that. On ADUs, so the state made changes to ADUs. You probably most, most of you know this. That allows any homeowner in the state of California to have both junior ADU, that's one that's internal to your home, and an accessory dwelling unit that's detached from the home, separate unit, could be a converted garage. It could be a little cottage in the back. So the city adopted changes to your local ordinance to be in compliance with the state, the state requirements. And you're seeing an uptick in interest from homeowners, and that's happening throughout the state. There's other things the city could also do to help, and is working on to help people understand what an ADU is, what make a decision whether it's the right thing for them, and then find sort of the resources they need to make it happen. So we actually, just, so there's a regional working group that city staff are a part of, cities around Monterey County that are talking to each other because of a lot of people working on this. Just, this is an example, the one in the images here, something we're going to be working, we, we actually have been working statewide on some ADU stuff. This is a screenshot of a calculator, you calculator, you can go online. It will be rolling this out, working with the Monterey County jurisdictions to make this available. And you can type in which city you're in. This is an example. You can see it says Santa Rosa, if it's big enough on your screen. And it'll help you determine based on the size of unit that you're thinking about, what the income stream is you might expect based on local rent structures, how much it might cost you based on local costs, and make a decision financially. So that's one thing. We also recently did a statewide survey of ADUs to understand how much are they renting for. And here you can see just a quick summary, the, the official full report isn't out yet, but we do have the preliminary results. And this is specific to coastal Monterey and Santa Cruz counties. So about half of the ADUs are being made available for free to a friend or a family member. And that's, you know, particularly during COVID, that has been happening a lot, so not a surprise there. And it's actually not out of sync with data on ADU use around the, at least around the Western U S. A third of the rents are being made, are rented for, for, you know, a cost. And those rents are actually affordable to moderate-income households. And then about thirteen percent that are being rented at a cost are affordable to low income. So it's actually, again, so it's not something that we're putting any kind of deed restriction on, but they're performing in the market to help create affordability. So that's the things that are going on, and staff are working on that, and we're, we're providing some support. But what we want to talk a bit about tonight and hear your feedback on is two near-term actions. And both of them are actually related to implementing state law. So the state has a density bonus law. And that actually has embedded in the parking standard change, parking standard reductions that qualifying development can request. And you have a program in your current housing element that says you're going to look at your housing, your parking standards for residential and, and look at where in the community you could have considered lowering those parking standards. And pretty standard around the state, parking standards have been set in the last thirty, forty years, pretty high. And when we look at particularly affordable housing developments, there's a lot of research and evidence to show that car ownership is lower, and that part, parking demand is less, particularly for affordable housing. So, and based on location. So what we would do is work on an ordinance to bring forward to you that would implement the state law locally. It's a fairly complex law, and people, so how you take that state law and then apply it to your different zone districts, and we get clarity for staff and for applicants about how the density bonus law works in Pacific Grove. So that's what we'd be working on. Currently, a developer could come in. There's State Bill thirty five, SB thirty five. And basically say, I want streamlined review, and I want to apply the density bonus. So it's not that this is creating something new, but it's creating clarity for everybody that is involved in creating housing. We could, as part of that, also look at the underlying densities in areas that we want to see more affordable housing, particularly like in the downtown or along Central Avenue, and potentially look at changes to the underlying zone densities or create additional incentives as part of that. And again, we would look at the parking standards as part of this effort. So that's one area. The second is related to what's called objective development standards and streamlined or ministerial non-discretionary review. So you have in your standards, you're probably pretty familiar with them, language that the state now says is not acceptable for review of housing development. So they're looking for us to put in place standards that's, that any person could read and know how to apply it. So I can't remember the exact words. Anastasia had them. You have some words that will not create bizarre effects as sort of one of the criteria you will apply. And like many communities, there's about preserving neighborhood character. Well, five people could read those words and come up with five conclusions about what that means. You can still say that it needs to fit with the neighborhood character, but then you need to quantify and, and be explicit about how you're going to measure that. So this effort would be, first, start off with sort of a review of what you have in place, highlighting where we think changes need to be made, and then following up with that on, with the effort to create objective standards and to define what the streamlined review procedure is in Pacific Grove. So those two are things that were, we, under the plan, would start working on in the coming weeks and come back in a few months with ordinances to implement those. Obviously, there'd be public outreach and public hearings related to those. Beyond that, sorry, this should say midterm actions at the top, not near-term. Midterm actions would be something we would, we would would be something we would, we would undertake in conjunction with the housing element update. So your housing element is due the updated housing element, December of twenty twenty three, which sounds far away, but actually isn't. So the way that the state process works, that December twenty third, twenty twenty three deadline is when it needs to be submitted to the state in final form for certification. And for folks who are listening, the housing element is one part of the general plan for the city. It is required under state law to be updated every eight years. There's a very complex process for doing that. And if you're out of compliance with that, there's a lot of, a lot of things that potentially happen. So we want to make sure we hit that deadline. Which means we need to have a draft in early twenty twenty three because it has to go through a review process with the state, public hearings, adoption before then goes to certification. So planning on the housing will start later this year or first part of next year. As part of that effort, probably the beginning, we would look at some priorities for implementation and development in conjunction with the housing element update. So one of them is to do an inclusionary zoning policy and create an affordable housing fund, those would be paired. The inclusionary zoning basically for, is saying every development that happens in the city is going to contribute to creating affordability. That can be done in several different ways. It can be done for residential and it can be done for commercial, there's different paths for doing those. But under residential inclusionary zoning, it would typically say a percentage of the units in a new development are going to be made available at a lower rate, below market rate to qualified, income qualified households. So some communities say we're going to ask for fifteen percent, twenty percent. You have different percentages, it could be that half of them need to be for moderate income and half need to be available for lower income. We would figure out what makes sense for Pacific Grove as part of that process. Some communities require that those units be developed as part of the new development, others provide the option of an in lieu fee. Some require some kind of payment for any type of development in terms of any size of development. And others only apply it to developments of a certain size enough. So there's decisions that have to be made in terms of the design, we'd want to test those in terms of how they perform in terms of the economic, economics of development. So that would be an effort that we would undertake in conjunction with the housing element update. And the Affordable Housing Fund is basically a place that you, if you collect in lieu fees, particularly, and then commercial impact fees, you would put them into the housing fund and the housing fund needs to be paired with a plan about how you're going to invest those funds to create housing. So it can't be, we'll just collect the money and it'll sit in an account. You'd have a plan for creating units from the fees that you collect. Another area for should be midterm action is encouraging what we call missing middle housing. So what's happening in the market around the state and the country and in your, in the region is we're getting a lot of single family homes and we're getting a lot of bigger apartment buildings. And there's not a lot that's in between. So missing middle is a term that's come up in recent years to describe sort of that housing type that was in some of the images I showed earlier. Small apartment developments, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes that we used to see a lot of and don't see very much of. And there's a whole bunch of reasons. So part of it's related to how we regulate land use. Part of it's related to institutional investors. But what we'd be doing is looking at opportunities to create more missing middle housing opportunities in Pacific Grove. Your R three zone district and R four to an extent are, are where those can happen currently. And we've done some preliminary looking at sort of how those perform related to other things that can happen in those districts. And maybe not a huge surprise. Luxury single family home pretty much wins every time in the economic competition about what would you want to build. So we would be looking at not just sort of looking at where we might allow, you know, rezoned R three to create more opportunities, but also looking at those R three standards so that a townhome development, a duplex or others could perform economically against a single family home. Because otherwise, over time, what you're going to see is actually loss of some of those older duplexes, triplexes, and people converting them into single family homes. So not only are you not, not going to be creating more affordable opportunities, you're actually going to be losing some of the ones that you have now. This is just a map, we did a quick sort of look with staff and sort of, well, what areas might we apply sort of R three zoning and expand it? It's highlighted in sort of those dotted lines there. This is not something we're going to do tomorrow, but this would be examples of areas where it might make sense. So there tend to be areas that you actually have those housing types already on the ground. But they're not allowed to do the current zoning that's in those areas. They're in close in, they're walkable areas. So this is, again, we would do this in conjunction with the housing element process. And we'd also be looking at the standards. And the last of the midterm actions related to small lots subdivisions, which I know you've talked a fair amount about. And so this is folks new to the topic. The city has historically had pretty small lots in the, in the older part of the community, eighteen hundred square foot, square foot lots is, is common. There is a historic map that actually shows the batting for eighteen hundred square foot lots, that's not a legal subdivision map though. So what this process would do would be to set up the criteria and a defined process for subdividing. You know, could be a thirty six hundred square foot lot into two eighteen hundred square foot lots consistent with the historic pattern. And we could also look at sort of other larger lots that, and sort of what subdivision would be appropriate. Doesn't mean that everybody can go out the next day and do it. It's still to go through a process to be criteria to review and decide whether it's appropriate in each location. But that would be one thing we'd work on. And then there's also the issue that you're seeing some of your small lots actually lost to people purchasing to adjacent lots and merging them again to build a larger single family home. So something to consider also would be what, what criteria would you apply to those mergers to discourage them? Again, you're not, you know, you could create two eighteen hundred square foot lots, see two smaller single family homes. They are not going to be affordable for sale homes for lower income people, but they will be relatively more affordable than if you had, you know, say there are two twelve hundred square foot cottages. One twenty four hundred square foot home will be less affordable than those two cottages. I know I'm covering a lot of ground, hopefully you're keeping notes on things you want to say, take questions. The last, the last area of the action plan is called planning for the future. And I just want to underscore because they come at the end, it's called planning for the future, doesn't mean they're not important, they're actually really important. But there are things that are going to take some time and effort. And I'll just say, sometimes the things that take the most time and are the hardest are the right things to do. So one is we've had some discussion in the advisory group about opportunity sites. So there are some city owned sites, some of them are used currently for parking in the downtown area. You have some school district owned sites, you have institute, other institutionally owned sites, employer owned sites. And some old shopping centers that are all some pretty key opportunities for not only creating new affordable housing, but also creating other kind of community amenities. And there's, I'll just show a couple of examples of what other communities have been doing. But this is all about partnership. So, you know, the city owns the land, the city isn't the housing developer. But the city could say, hey, we're going to put our land in the mix and we're going to partner with a nonprofit housing developer who's going to put together a suite of funding in order to create not just housing, but potentially ground floor retail, community facilities. Just as an example, just of the way on the bottom photo there, the city of Santa Cruz is creating a new downtown library along with fifty units of affordable housing and a new, I think it's four hundred space parking structure in their downtown. So it's a new community facility, it's creating the affordable housing and it's creating parking as a to serve the larger downtown area. On the top is an example, unless there's many examples of this. So this is from Davie City. School districts are actually getting into develop partnering with housing developers, they're not doing themselves. They're partnering with housing developers, specifically nonprofit housing developers to build housing to serve their staff, their employees, so staff and faculty. And this is just a challenge across the, the state of teachers not earning enough to live in the communities where they're working. So David City's doing one, there's one in Palo Alto, there's one in Mountain View, there is one in San Jose. I know Mon array's been talking about it, I don't think they've been able to put it together yet. But that, again, this is just an example of groups, institutions, school district cities that have land and figuring out how to make that partnership work in order to create an outcome that they want. And I'll just, before I go on, we're actually working to put together a panel. I was hoping to be able to give you a date tonight, but we're still working on it. To invite a few people who've worked on these kinds of partnership projects in other communities to just do a quick presentation. Probably during the day, hopefully sometime in June. And we'll get an announcement out about that. We'll hear from some examples, what was the secret sauce that helped make these happen? What did the city put in? What did the school district put in? Who's being served? What was the community process? So we'll be hosting a panel discussion, we'll record that and make it available. Just to sort of start thinking about what, what's happened elsewhere and what makes sense for Pacific Grove. One other area, I'll keep this one brief. You've got the Forest Hill specific plan that was done in nineteen ninety eight for, you know, a pretty significant part of the community. At that time, it was really focused on retail and those, some of those retail centers are pretty underutilized in terms of the land utilization. And one opportunity, again, a long-term opportunity would be to update that specific plan, look at how some of the redevelopment opportunities there could integrate housing along with community space and reintegrated retail to serve the community in the long term. And then I definitely want to just hit on the fact that this is not unique to Pacific Grove. Your neighboring communities are also facing this challenge. And there are regional forums that are, and groups that are working already. And so the plan just speaks to the importance of that. And to continuing to collaborate with other communities to learn from each other, to ensure you have a stronger voice in state legislation, to engage employers who they, they see the region, they don't necessarily just work in one city. And potentially create opportunities, leverage resources to create outcomes that are serving the, the larger area. So that is the last bit of the action plan. So we're going to hear your feedback this evening. Well, based on your feedback and forward on those near term action priorities, we'll convene that learning from others panel that I described. And then the next step after this sort of set of activities is to gear up for the housing element update. And those midterm priorities. That is in my presentation. Thanks for bearing with me and thanks for helping me fix my slides.
Thank you very much, Mr. Driscoll. And now we'll go out and how about David, if if you could stand ready, we might need those slides later on. But for now, we're going to go out to public comment. And Ms. Candell, do we have anyone from the public wishing to provide input?
We do, Your Honor. Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you very much and good evening. I think that was an excellent presentation. And a very objective. And I've been very concerned about how Pacific Grove is going to address the importance of and need for affordable housing. One of the concerns I have though is going forward is we don't look for magic bullets to require the housing to be put somewhere else. The notion of in lieu of fees concerns me because what that does is it encourages developers to say, oh, here's some money. Put the housing somewhere else. But it's, where is the somewhere else? And what's really important is that communities spread the the affordable housing throughout the community. It makes it a better vital community. It because everybody is neighbors to everybody. And the notion of we'll shove affordable housing up at Forest Hill, which I think is a good idea to update that. Of course, we need to update the nineteen ninety four general plan for the community. That hasn't been done. So I think this is an excellent start for the community. I think it's open. It needs to bring people in. The idea of, of balancing housing needs for grandparents, children, grandchildren and other, and the working force is really, really important. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And thank you.
Doris Beckman, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Doris Beckman, the program manager of Home Match Monterey and a fellow home sharer. Home Match would just like to thank the city council, the mayor, and Terry Schaefer for your support when housing stabilization is so key. We are excited to do more in the new fiscal year and welcome all opportunities to partner and connect the community with affordable housing options. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you and good evening to the council and, and planning commission. I was lucky enough to work on the housing advisory group and I thought our consultant David Beth were good listeners and brought broad knowledge of California housing issues to our discussion. The report in your packet tonight represents what they heard from the advisory group and from, from residents. But reports, even ones as good as this, sometimes end up on a shelf. So I urge you to, to take action. And after robust discussion tonight, give clear direction to our planning staff and the planning commission to get to work on, on housing. I support all of the recommended strategies. But one thing, one thing is hard to accept. Almost all of them remove barriers to, to housing. But they don't, even if you do all of them, they wouldn't create a single new unit. That's up to property owners, developers and investors. But one thing we can do that would result in units is, was tucked at the end, and the idea of a partnership between a nonprofit housing developer and the city to build affordable housing on city owned land. And I'm happy to hear that a panel has been set up to, to, to talk about how that may be done. But I, in addition to that, I think the council should get the staff working on that now, even though it would take several years to, to accomplish. But it would, it is one strategy that definitely would result in, in new new, new units. And I'm going to be a little repetitive here, but I'm going to repeat what's in the report and what David said and what Mr. Chani said. Our goal is to create opportunities for our workers to live closer to their jobs, for children to raise their own families here one day. For our neighbors to age in place and stay a part of the community, community they love. And for our community to retain the economic and cultural diversity that we value. And I think that's really a noble goal. And I also believe that if, if we work together, we can accomplish it. And that I think would give us something to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council and commission. And we'd like to start off the discussion and Mr. Driscoll has agreed to go back and, and share a slide if that's helpful or not. So.
Do you want me to pull up the slides or I'll just wait?
Well, let's just, let's just hold off Commissioner Jacklin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If no one else will start, I'll start. For the most part, I welcome, I have three points, I'll say. For the most point, by the way, thank you very much, Mr. Driscoll. You did a very smooth job and 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 a lot of material is hidden under the words you spoke today. It was very, very articulate and very well put together. Thank you. I would say for the most part, I welcome the solutions proffered in this report. It's a really good report. It's actually pretty terse. It's pretty readable. I recommend, I I would suggest that recommendation three A for the small lot be moved into made one C and implemented now. We've had so much discussion on that and there's no need to delay that to something far out in the future when the planning commission is already put more than a year and change in the in the small lot initiative. It does, it's not something for the vaporware. Let's knock it out right now. I so too, I would also think that four B, four B, which is talking about the Forest Hill area, shouldn't just be an initiative for for Forest Hill. And I think Mr. Shiana made that point too. Yeah, Forest Hill is a ripe target for this sort of change in the paradigm, multi mostly multi-use, multi-use areas out of that that shopping areas, those 200, 300 stores. But but it's it's not Forest Hill to be the bill payer or the lone hope for the city's effort at real replanning for for more housing. I think that should be not just Forest Hill, it should be our city writ large that has to replan in that in that part. I think in one sense, this report disappoints me because it's it's missing the rigor of numbers. Usually when you identify a problem and identify solutions and you have this, the the effects, the first tier effects, second tier effects, and we don't have quantitative analysis of this will give us 10 units. This will give us 20. I think you said that in the middle of your report. Well, I don't have numbers for how much I'm going to get out of this sort of stuff. And and the important part for that, although you did a little bit with the the ADAs, ADUs. But that that gets to two points, point two of mine, which was housing needs. And and it's going to go into our housing needs. Page 10 of the report states that our housing need is based on RENA, RENA targets. They're AMBAD coordinated, but make no mistake, those numbers are top-down directives, not bottom-up report actual needs. In other words, our needs are not our needs as articulated by all these people who put in their 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 help and their information. Our needs are what the state says our needs are. And we can, we can't even validate them. We can push back a little. So that is kind of a failed proposition. And the state will force us, can force us to do housing extension. But I wouldn't pretend that satisfying their empirical data is 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 satisfying our social needs, helping us per se in exactly the way we need it. So that's that's, but and now moving from that, I'll go to my third point of of what defining our housing need. You picked out one good slice, one model population that was very well the presented. The paradigm of seven of 7,500 low-wage service employee workers of whom 4,000 commute to Pacific Grove each day. But that's only part of our labor and the labor picture. And frankly, it may not even be the major part of the model that makes up our housing need model. At least an equal number, probably closer to 25% more are commuting out of PG every day and living here. All right, a large part of that community, but not all are military, their staff, their faculty, their students at DLI and 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 Navy postgraduate school. The military community is missing in action in this report. It's not a military report, yet those two institutions combined with their budget of three quarters of a billion dollars a year put much, much, much money into this town in apartment rents, home rents, home purchases, schooling fees, and just living here. So thousands of military-related faculty, staff, service members, and retired like me are living in this town and have housing needs. The house, we just kind of said our housing need is is modeled over the 7,500 low but low low-wage service economy workers here. It shouldn't be defined in that narrow context. I know you you cover a little bit, but it's, it it should be a report for the full city, not just for a small segment of of affordable. In fact, some of those demographics I mentioned need affordable housing. When I was in E5, I needed affordable housing. But but that said, I think that this report is wonderful. It 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 makes a difference. You said this in your report, making a difference is the real point. And the strategies you offer, some of them will make a difference. That I I think that is the 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 go-to point for this. This is a ball that should be spiked into the end zone, thrown to the end zone. I do think that density bonus, your articulation of the density bonus situation is 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 kind of not quite laser sharp. We have density bonuses on our on our state, on our city books. We have them in the state books. I watched them get slam dunked and miserably put put into application with the Grand Screen project that frankly was not the way to do density bonuses. And if that's the way we do density bonuses, we're going to look like Third Avenue and Avenue E in New York City if we're not careful. And that's not necessarily bad. They're probably a nice place. My dad grew up there, but that's not really the idea of density bonuses. If we want people to stay here and you want people to live here and stay here. This is this, it needs bear and repeating. Don Murphy repeated a point. My final point I'll repeat is you also need business opportunities here. This is part of a of about three balls in the air. You need the housing, you need the job opportunities. My kid moved out of here. He went out here to get work. Maybe when he retires or come back, or maybe he was a billionaire businessman, he can come back. But he went out to find more opportunities in the world. Many of us have kids who do that. That's not bad. It's good to stay if you can. But we're a small town, so we have to structure ourselves with that. And the final walk-off I'll say is missing, and I said this to Mr. Driscoll before, is capacity. We talk about RENA numbers, but we don't have hard data on how much we can grow. What's the capacity? Not infrastructure capacity and real estate capacity. You get a good point of working with partnering neighbors and churches and stuff, but our capacity is finite. We're a built-out town. We infill, we infill. And the infill plan is so much harder than Palo Alto's or Mountain View's plan where they they have thousands of acres of lots that they can build up everywhere, even Palo Alto has a lot of land to build. We don't. So thank you. It's a very good plan. I I'm supporting it. Good recommendations. Implement them, implementing will move us forward. I do think we should switch through, move some forward to the left, get them done faster. And thank you very much for the hard work.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Driscoll, for this great presentation. So just going through the slides, so the already in action. Those are great. I love the Kobia Home Match. I'm just wondering regarding the ADUs. You know, I sort, it's nice to have this data, how half of the ADUs are being, you know, basically utilized for friends and family. Are some cities, you know, how are they encouraging their ADUs to be rented? I think that that is something that I would like to to see if we can incorporate and and perhaps that's a discounted permit fee. You know, I mean, obviously it would be based on good faith. But I would like to see the city making more of an effort to really educate and encourage the ADUs to, you know, to be utilized. Because obviously they're using the affordable housing water entitlements, right? And so, you know, they're getting permits and streamlined and they're, you know, utilizing this water allocation and then it's like for their friends to come and hang out for the weekend. So I think that we're really missing the mark on that. So I would love to see us tighten that up. And perhaps there's an ADU for friends and family, and that's a different program where you're not getting the benefits of of the ADU, you know, of what we're offering, if that makes sense. But I also get it, like their doors and their accounting towards arena, but you know, I mean, I I think that we're we're missing the spirit of that program. The density bonus and the parking standards, you know, we're already sort of going that path. I think that's great. I think more and more people are on board, people versus cars. You know, people are more important and we could build 10,000 parking spots and they would all be filled up. That's just the bizarre. That's just the the deal with parking. So I think though, over time, people are understanding and we're hearing less chatter if we're removing, you know, some parking or parking requirements. You know, with the development standards and streamlined review, I I think that, you know, I'm hearing conversations about that. I'm hearing less negative chatter. And I I think again, that's sort of something that people are getting on board and more comfortable with. And that also has to do with, you know, the outreach and education. So I definitely would encourage that we keep that opportunity with regards to, you know, having the information available. As far as the near-term actions, you know, of course, this missing middle housing is, I think, is great. And that's something with our city is that we have to utilize what is already there. And so I think as we come out of COVID and we really get a good sense of how many people are still going to work from home, how many people are going, you know, back into the offices? You know, I'm hoping that we're going to see this sort of like commercial office space moving into, you know, that that dorm-like housing that we're seeing more in in city and high-density areas, which aren't, you know, great for families per se, but they are great for, you know, the DLI student or the, you know, nursing, the traveling nurse or other students. So it is very much a younger generational housing because they do have like a community kitchen, you know, they they perhaps have like community bathrooms. But I do think that at some point, you know, we could maybe start working on that and repurposing some commercial space that we have. And then you know, I definitely like the planning for the future with regards to bringing in partnerships. And I mean, we, the city, any city is not in the business of being a landlord or a property developer, quite frankly. So that's just a very easy connection to make. And there are companies that, you know, or nonprofits, actually, a lot of them are nonprofits that are eager to partner with cities. So and I and I do think between properties that Pacific Grove has and our water entitlements, you know, I would hope that we would be, you know, somewhat attractive. I mean, obviously, they're not going to be able to build a huge project. But, you know, I I think that we could do something nice that fits within our community. So I definitely would like to see that, or at least that dialogue of the city of Pacific Grove is interested. I think that that says a lot too. And that's all that I have. Thank you so much. What a pleasure to to work with you and continue to work with you and Beth. I mean, this has really been a very well orchestrated journey. And and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the patience and the level of expertise that you all have shown. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Driscoll, for a very informative presentation. I have a question and then I have a couple of thoughts. So it looks like this, this was, there was a community outreach done appears over the course of a year to gather feedback, et cetera. Was part of the feedback also around how are the ADUs actually working for those who have actually constructed ADUs? I mean, did you gather any feedback there?
Through the community outreach we did in Pacific Grove, there wasn't a specific folks I need to use. The data I shared was from a statewide survey that was done that had not a huge sample size from the area, but maybe about 40 or so, 40, 50 responses.
Yeah, specifically, I wanted to know, I mean, we we have, we have an ADU process with the city. I wanted to know, is that ADU process actually working effectively or not? Can that be sped up? Can anything be done to tweak the current ADU process, which will help speed up housing? So if if that's feedback that you've collected or any talks there, that would be much appreciated. So that's one item. The other thing is I, it appears that at least one of the slides read something to do with the ADU calculator. You you may have worked on such calculators in the past with with your firm or for other cities. Can can the city leverage you or your firm to develop items such as these? We do have a new website that is coming up, et cetera. Is that right?
I can answer on the city website, but in terms of calculator, yeah, we we've actually got a grant from the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative to support rolling out the calculators. So we're just the team that's doing that. We're setting up a meeting with the Monterey County jurisdictions.
Okay, and then a couple of other items for me. I mean, I'm completely in support of any initiative which is actually increasing housing, whether that's infill or otherwise commercial. What I wanted to know is just from a priority standpoint, you had listed in motion items and then future items. And there were like two, item number two, item number three, item number four. It appears that they're sequential in nature and really I don't see a need for anything being sequential. So however you want to convey it or however we want to take this forward. Ideally, I would like everything in parallel. I know there's a resource constraint. There's a lot of constraints there. But ideally, you would want to think in terms of parallel efforts for everything. Not necessarily long-term future because long-term future just gets tabled as far as I know. So when will that actually happen? So a recommendation really is perhaps think in terms of parallel efforts. And then finally, I wanted to know if, I mean, as you may know, the the coastal area is is this kind of like water is a big thing over here. So how is water and planning? How 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 will your firm help us to say with water constraints that we have and how planning is going right now? How can we leverage both of those to to make affordable housing? Something to consider. Thank you.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Mr. Driscoll. I have to be very honest, when I first read the information that was presented to us to read for the meeting, I was a little disturbed because what I saw felt pretty elemental to me because I've been doing a lot of reading about housing initiatives, housing planning, affordable housing. But your presentation brought it back to what we needed to think about. So I wanted to say thank you. It was obvious that you paid attention to what our housing commission was saying to you and you were very thoughtful in how you approached what our needs are and how we are as a community. So thank you for that. I also, I have a number of points I just wanted to discuss. One of the things that I would like to see more of, and I think that Ms. McAdams addressed this as well. I would like to see more outreach and education for our community. I think that there is sort of a missing piece where our community is not aware of what's happening with legislation. There are some pretty significant issues that are happening legislatively if we don't match some of the RENA numbers and what's happening with affordable housing. And I think that it would behoove us to have an open discussion with the community in regards to that. But it does need to be done, I think, sensitively. The other thing that I am concerned about is I would definitely like to see an information hotline on our, in our community, maybe via the city, via the city website. But an ADU information. I don't know what you would call it, just an information site, but that would include how to go about doing an ADU, but also might include plans that could be utilized here in our community. I know that there are a lot of other communities that are offering up permit-ready plans, and I think that that might be something that would behoove us. When Ms. McAdams talked about looking at changing how we would do permitting for ADUs for family and friends, that's not possible. I don't think that there's a way to suss out when people are applying for ADUs that you can say, oh, you can't use it for your friends and family. There's nothing in the legislature that talks about it. It's very clear that ADUs have a very, very quick streamlined process. The legislature is very clear that they want to see no obstacle in the way of people planning ADUs and implementing and building ADUs. However, what would help our process, I believe, and this was something that was brought up by Mr. Pedori, is we don't have any kind of funding to help people build ADUs. If you build ADUs, they are very expensive. There are prefab ADUs, also there are ADUs that can be made from trailers as well, and that's not emphasized either. And the reason why I'm talking so much to ADUs is I have been working extensively on the ADU Subcommittee for the Planning Commission and have been looking at our current code and looking at how we can make some changes there because we're a little out of date. And again, I, I would really encourage that we look for funding for ADUs and see if we can raise that money. The other thing that I felt really strongly about that I very much appreciated that was in this particular report is the emphasis on the missing middle. And I think that we need to very much pay attention to the missing middle. These are our, our teachers, as Mr. Pedori. And also Commissioner Chacklin pointed out, there also might be our people that are DLI, Naval Postgraduate School. These are people that are not able to always afford rentals in our community, though the military does get a strong subsidy. So I think it's really important to look at how can we get together with nonprofits that do this for a business. I think that would be something that would be in our best interest. And again, I want to say what everybody else has said. I don't think that we need to do this in sort of a stepwise progression. I look at the idea for the Forest Hill project as something that we could look at now. There is a group of, there is a Subcommittee for the Planning Commission that is looking at land use of the general plan. And I think that that's certainly something that we could look at and talk about and begin planning for. And I totally agree with Commissioner Chacklin. I don't think that our planning for affordable housing and housing in general just needs to be focused on Forest Hill. I think we need to look citywide. And again, thank you, Mr. Driscoll, for your very complete report.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'm not going to repeat all the, everything that's been said, very good points. But actually, I have a question for Mr. Driscoll and then Ms. Schaefer. Have you, Mr. Driscoll, have you seen in the past where, I, I mean, you mentioned about parking, you know, cutting that back? Or have you seen anything to fast forward some of this, these items that you've discussed in other areas that you've been involved in?
Fast forward in terms of?
Fast forward in regards to, I'll say it plainly, cutting the red tape.
Yeah, I mean, I think the approach to reducing parking requirements has been different in many different communities. But yeah, I, I think some communities are more there, ready to reduce parking requirements than others. So I really sort of look to you in terms of direction, like it's very good. But part of the reason for tonight is to like hear from you, like are you ready for us to bring some things forward? That I want a lot of time and effort into crashing ordinance and come forward.
And maybe, excuse me, I'm sorry, did you go ahead? Yeah, maybe, maybe there is something on the parking, but I think that's one area that might be able to help development. Even though we, I mean, forest is important also, but you know, the reality is we're somewhat landlocked a little bit. And we don't have a heck of a lot of lots in. But yeah, that's what my recommendation would be, you know, just personally, if we're able to shorten the parking requirements, that, that might help for people that might want to develop a lot or two or development. And then for Ms. Schaefer, the other question I have is, you know, I have asked this before, there is not a, anything coming down the pipeline in development. And I don't think there are. That's one question. And the other question is, the lot, the city-owned lot behind the, the movie theater. At one point, there was supposed to be a development there. Do you, do you know anything about that, Ms. Schaefer?
Yeah, so Councilmember Emilio through the mayor. There was several years back, a project that was talked about for the parking lot behind the theater. The problem is the city-owned property of the parking lot has no water meter on it. So the only way to consider developing that parcel during the water cease and desist order is to partner with the property owner. So the theater as a property owner had a water meter. And from what I understood, there was, it wasn't a situation where the city and a private property owner could come together and come up with a project that was a minimal to both parties. So they backed away from that particular project. Now, keep in mind that there are other properties in the city that are owned by people that could potentially develop those properties. And without regulatory language that specifically speaks to how those properties could be developed. There's state law that requires streamlined processes already on the books for jurisdictions. For example, SB thirty-five is a bill that requires a jurisdiction who has been unable to meet their arena numbers for the low and very low income population, that they can come in and do a ministerial permit for a hundred percent affordable project in a, in a zone that allows for it. So that's one of the reasons why you want to be very mindful about planning where language and change for the community that will, that we want to see. And we have done some parking changes. The Planning Commission and the council did adopt some changes to our parking regulations, but the density bonus regulations really have to be expanded upon and really help us define what kind of development we want to see moving forward. And I hope that answers your question.
Well, thank you very much for that information. Really appreciate that.
Commissioner Ashelman.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have some, a couple of questions. I find it hard, difficult to imagine how we manage to do affordable housing with a very high cost of materials and going up and the very restrictive building codes. Both of them make a project more expensive. So how do we deal with that? Referencing the comment that single-family homes would no longer be allowed in multi-unit zoned areas with existing homes within multi, within R three areas be grandfathered in, should they need to be seriously remodeled? Or torn down and rebuilt? I'm interested in what other states, how many other states in the United States have adopted AUDs? And I think that Councilmember Emilio, I determined was referring to parking standards in the city as a whole, not as AUDs, AUDs, the parking is not a consideration. So I, I think that I, I was going in the wrong direction when you first spoke. And has, have, has any been discussion taken place regarding the privately held very large parcels? There aren't many of them, but there are some in town. There's one on Ocean View and there's another on the intersection of Seventeen Mile Drive and Lighthouse. Has there been any discussion with the property owners of either one? Any consideration given to future plans for those parcels? And I believe that that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Clody.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I first wanted to discuss this ADU issue. The, you know, it's been mentioned that ADUs are being used by families and friends and whatnot. Well, you know, when it comes to land use regulation, you know, there's kind of the axiom that you regulate the use and not the people involved. So I don't think we have any real jurisdiction or capacity to, to get involved in that. So I will mention, however, that the state, one of the few things the state does allow us to do as far as ADUs go and regulating them, is that they cannot be used for short-term vacation rentals. That is like one of the few exceptions involved in allowing jurisdictions to regulate affordable dwelling units. And for good reason, of course, but I wanted to mention that. I am a little worried about though that these, you know, the ADUs that have been, come forth and ask for some of our water entitlement have done kind of under the guise that this is going to be used for affordable housing. And I know we don't have a special rate that applies only to affordable housing. I think we have a reduced rate that applies to anyone coming in for access to the entitlement. So, but based on some of the discussion we've had this evening, I would be very concerned about establishing a, a special rate for the entitlement for ADUs that would claim to have, you know, an affordable use. Because you can't, you can't, in the end, you know, you just can't, you can't, you can't truly regulate it. Now, as far as water goes, I think it was already mentioned, but I'll mention it again, the regulatory bottleneck is for new meters. We've got an entitlement, we've got like, I think we've got close to thirty-eight acre feet available, which is just a tremendous amount of water, more than any other jurisdiction on the peninsula. But water meters is the bottleneck. And that, as Ms. Schaefer already mentioned, there is no meter on the parking lot behind the theater. So I think that's where that project got held up. And that probably isn't going to be changing for, you know, at least two, three, maybe four years before the CalM cease and desist orders gets lifted. And then the associated CPUC moratorium on new water meters. Okay, with that said, I am going to play devil's advocate because, you know, that's what I do. And I just wanted, and when I say devil's advocate, I mean, just kind of offer some thoughts about what can happen when we get, when we go down this, you know, major change and how we, how we deal with housing. One, one thing that I kind of got concerned a little bit about is allowing, you know, the subdivision of, say, a thirty-six-hundred square foot hot lot into two eighteen-hundred square foot lots. You know, most of these smaller lots are, of course, in the retreat area, which means there's probably historic homes there. So when you start, starting to thinking about, you know, just, okay, yeah, let's just do this. Let's just go ahead and allow the subdivision. Well, you, you want to be mindful too about how that can impact historic resources. So that's one thought. There's been some idea about this, this rezoning of development standards within some of our districts, you know. Some of our districts are especially set up of, I'm thinking of like R one H, H stands for height. R one H set up to have a very minimal impact as far as height goes along the ocean, down there along Ocean View Boulevard. And, you know, when you increase density there, there's only one way to go and that's up. So there's just has to be this, you know, there's, there's got to be a cost benefit analysis or there has to be some kind of understanding how our zoning districts and land use developments have been set up over decades. And we just need to be mindful of what the purpose of these districts were and not to necessarily compete with an objective of affordable housing, but also how to mesh it in and just don't wholesale transplant. And, you know, along those lines, I don't think having just one massive ordinance before us is the right thing to do. I, I really believe in doing this in a stepwise fashion because there are a lot of interconnecting pieces to this that unless you're very careful, unless you think them through, there will be unintended consequences. So I want to just mention that. I, to Robin's point about the R three district, I noticed that as well. One of the recommendations is that single-family dwelling only be allowed in R one and R two. So say you own property in R three. And, you know, if you do, that means you could, currently, that means you could build a multifamily structure. But now, we're going to say you shall build a multifamily structure. I, I don't know about that one. I think that's the, get involved with some property rights issues there. And I, I think that's something that needs closer attention before you just say we want to do that. As for, you know, some of the districts actually were created by initiative too, at least some of the R two areas. So there's some, there's some issue there legally. I don't know if they dealt with the development standards at the time. But again, there's, we've got these layers in Pacific Grove for setting up zoning districts through initiative processes, through, you know, decades and decades of, of Planning Commission and council action. It's just, it's, it's, it's very complicated and I don't want to see us rush it. And then finally, as regards streamlining, I understand the intent, but again, plain devil's advocate here, there are unintended consequences. I think you can end up with a worse, a worse project if you don't have regulatory and discretionary oversight. And, you know, when I developed, when I did my house, I, I was thinking, oh, they're just going to tell, you know, it's, it's all bad. They're not going to, they're going to tell me everything I don't want to do. I uh I was thinking, oh, they're just going to tell, you know, it's, it's all bad, they're not going to, they're going to tell me everything I don't want to do and this and that, and I've gotten this mindset about it. But then, when I went and did it, I actually got some great ideas from them. Uh G D Byrne gave me a couple of ideas, as a matter of fact. So, you know, this, this idea that you, when you go, I know there's a lot of stress because there's usually a lot of money involved, so I understand that. I've been through the process myself at least twice, so I understand it. But there's also the opportunity to get a better project. And when you just say, oh, we're going to streamline this away, you can lose that opportunity. So my opinion is that you only streamline what is absolutely mandated through statute, state statute. And that we try, at least, to hold on to some kind of discretionary review so we can get the community involved. You know, a lot of the times, what, what people get upset about is that they hear there's this thing going on down their street or whatever, and a lot of people are not as involved as we are. You know, they don't watch the council meetings, they don't watch the planning commission meetings. But then they hear, oh, this was just streamlined in, you never even had an opportunity to go down to City Hall and give your, you know, input on the project. So, you know, public hearings are not necessarily uh an evil or or bad thing. Uh, you know, we talk about transparency all the time. Well, hey, that's what a public hearing is. It's transparency. So when it comes to streamlining, I would say keep it at a minimum. And um I do appreciate the presentation, I appreciate the effort of uh by the mayor and members uh of the committee. But my, my final suggestion, and I'll just repeat it again, because I think it does bear repeating, is that we go slow. As, and we do it piece by piece, so we get a better connection or better idea of where all the connections are. Thank you.
Commissioner Bloom.
Uh, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Um, I I guess my, I'm kind of a bottom-line person on this, and I'm just wondering, um, are we looking at maybe uh planning to, and not just planning, but actually putting it on the table as far as um uh what we're going to do? I mean, as far as a project goes, as far as numbers of projects, are we looking at maybe planning on doing ten, getting ten properties built? Um, are we, have we, have we actually identified any properties in this process? As Robin said, I think, that where, where we actually could do something. Um, what comes to mind for me is the, the property there where the old railroad station was, I guess, down there on Senex, and I believe it's Grove Acre. Um, and is, that's, you know, it's owned by the railroad. But there's plenty of, there's, there's quite a bit of land there that could be developed into like tiny houses. Is that the kind of thing that we would want to do? What, what do we, do we have any, are we getting out of this, all this planning? Are we getting any, any actual projects that could actually be done? And put on the books, uh whether it's, whether it's just individuals doing it, or whether you're getting uh assistance from uh uh, you know, a joint um public-private uh partnership, things along that line. I, I mean, what I, I would like to see out of this after a year, year and a half, whatever we end up being on it, is actually something we're actually going to do. Um, not just have a plan for it, uh and identify a lot of, a lot of information. Uh but what, I, I, I'd just like to see something that actually comes out of this. Um, the, you know, as, as Luke was saying, the R two zoning initiative, uh first off, we don't have hardly any R three, just clean R three zones in Pacific Grove. We have a very few R three uh a real true R three zone in Pacific Grove. We have R three P G R, which is in the retreat. And you're, you know, you're pretty limited there from a standpoint, and if you start saying, well, you're going to have to build, if, if you've got a vacant lot down there, you're going to have to build multiple families, that just doesn't make any sense at all. Um, and the R two zone, it has, uh because it was done by initiative, you can't change anything, I guess. And that basically made almost all the single-family homes in the R two zone uh legal non-conforming. You know, a lot of people don't realize that. And um because it, it said that the minimum lot size was four thousand square feet. Well, most of those, most of those houses down there are um um, and of course, now, I guess with the A D Us, I guess that doesn't matter, you could, you know, you could put an A D U on it, a junior A D U. Um, but as far as building, uh, you know, building a couple of houses there, you, you weren't able to do it before because the, the zoning said the minimum lot size for interior lots is four thousand, and the corner lots was five thousand. Uh, you know, it almost made it, uh, like I said, everything was legal non-conforming. So I guess I'd like to see out of, out of all this, um, you know, that we actually maybe do a, you know, come up with, come up with some land you actually could build, whether it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, or whatever houses, whether they're tiny houses or, you know, just something that's actually you can sink your teeth into, and you can say, this is something we did. Um, rather than we planned for this, and we studied this, and we end up with a study. And that's what's happened in the past. So I think, you know, I think you've got a, a lot of great information here. It's like, how, how are we going to apply it? And that's about it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, and thank you for this great report, David, and for all the comments from our, my colleagues. Um, I, I have a question about an area in town that we've talked about before on council, being behind the movie theater as city-owned lands and being able to develop, to develop that into affordable housing and condos. And I just, I would like, you know, David, maybe you could walk through the process of how to make that a reality.
Sure, and maybe in doing so, I'll respond to there, some of the comments about sort of identifying properties around the city. We, we did work with staff and developed a map of opportunity sites and started uh talking about what we could do to make things happen on any number of those properties. They all have challenges. Um, and that's why we decide, and they're all owned by different entities. And one by one, all those properties started getting taken off the map because, well, the property behind the theater doesn't have a water meter, so take that off. And this one has a voter initiative, and we'd have to go back to the voters and ask for permission to do something, so let's take that off. This is owned by a private property, and we haven't talked to them yet, but take that off. So that's why we decided to sort of step back and say, hey, let's have a partnership panel to talk about how these things happen and what needs to come together to make them happen. None of them are going to be easy, but they all have, I think, incredible value uh proposition. So the one behind the theater, there is the issue of the water meter. In my opinion, that's surmountable, but it's going to take some effort to do that. Uh, there's the challenge of split ownership on the, the two properties adjacent to each other. And there's just sort of, any changes, there's going to be a challenging conversation. And there's the voter initiative, so in order to do that property, we would need to, one, get the parties together and agree that this is worth a conversation worth having. To look at what is both possible and desirable. It's not going to be, I don't, in my opinion, that you would just do housing, you would probably do some kind of mixed use with, you'd want to activate the street level with some retail, because it's in the downtown core, you'd want to figure out the integration or separation with the theater use and what the future of that building is. You'd want to figure out how you're going to integrate parking. The advantage of that side is it's on a slope, it's pretty easy to do, tuck in parking underneath and do something above that creates a street frontage. So there's some great opportunities there. So you would do that analysis and sort of say, here's the range of options, here's sort of the economic performance. Here's what it looks like if we're able to put the month of city uh land in for free, potentially bring in a nonprofit housing developer, get some tax credit financing, possibly look at other grant funds, get clear on who we're trying to serve in that housing. So there's a number of things that we could do through a, a form of feasibility analysis that then you'd need to then say, hey, voters, we think this is something to be great to do on this property, and you'd have to go to the voters and ask them to approve that. So there's a number of steps, like I said in the presentation. It's not going to be easy, but it still might be worth doing.
Well, I, I would agree that it's absolutely worth doing, and I um thank you for stepping through that. I just, in that property, if you'll, if you'll let me ask one more question, Mayor, that um in particular, you talk about getting with the uh parties involved, meaning the other owners of the theater, because they have the meter. But uh have you seen in other cities where accommodations are made for things that, in order to develop that land? You know, for example, the state water board allows us to place a meter. I mean, how crazy is that? And then we don't have to, uh, the, the two properties don't have to be worked out. You know, we're not reliant on that. And so, and I know you work in other cities, but is uh, have you seen those types of accommodations? I mean, the state really wants affordable housing, so um, it seems like they would work with us on something like that. Or is that a pipe dream?
In my opinion, it's not a pipe dream, but it's not going to be easy. Um, those, the, the H C D has different authorities than the state water board. Um, but you would need, I think the first thing is to present the value proposition and, and have sort of a unified community uh stance, that this is something we want to see happen, and then get your state representatives uh behind it and, and start working the system. It, it happens. I mean, think, you know, everything happens because people put their effort into making it happen. And, and it's not just that property, there's other properties that also represent opportunities. Some of them have water meters, some of them don't, some of them have voter restrictions, some of them don't. And we think that, just starting with, yeah, go ahead.
I guess I would like to see if, if it, maybe it already exists, but something from, from the task group or your firm where we break down all the possibilities and be able to uh allow us to, uh, you know, smartly narrow in on the ones that are actually possible. Maybe not the easiest, I don't, I'm not saying the easiest ones, but the ones that are going to give us um the outcome we're looking for and then, and decide to tackle. So um, some, some kind of a spreadsheet like that would be great.
Sure. I mean, we could, sorry, just give you a fact, sort of, here's the steps and sort of that would need to be gone through.
Right. That's all. Thank you.
Prior to this meeting, I asked Chair Lilly if he would help me summarize some of the thoughts, and please add your own.
Okay, should I just do the planning commission?
No, no, let's.
Well, I'll, I'll throw in a few, I'll throw in a, a few comments from the others as well. Um, but first, uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to uh second the remarks that have been made by other people this evening about the uh, the work of the uh Housing Committee and David Driscoll, they, they've done a fabulous job. There is certainly a lot to like uh about this presentation and about this, this plan and proposal, and I second that. So I just wanted to say that. I think in hearing from the planning commission, at least, we heard a number of points. Um, uh, one point was made about uh picking a project uh instead of just planning, and I think uh that certainly would gain a lot of traction in the community because, uh, this is my comment, after the initial A D U rush, there might be a lull, and it'll take a while for various types of ordinances to take effect. And uh in the meantime, the state will be saying to us, well, where's your projects? And we're going to say, well, we're waiting for the things to take effect, so I think there's some merit to the comment about picking a couple of projects and, and going from there. Um, there was also a point made about grandfathering in um homes that are uh in multifamily districts uh that are single-family homes, I should say. And uh there's quite a few of those uh in my neighborhood, in fact, I live in one of them. Uh, and to second uh what Mr. Coletti said about um unintended consequences, well, we could probably do an A D U on, on my property, but uh there's four large charity jokes in the middle of everything. And um, you know, I don't think a lot of people would like those taken down. So there's, there's a lot of those issues out there that we're going to really have to go through, and I, I would, I would hardly uh second Commissioner Asherman's um comments about grandfathering. Um, also, cost of materials was mentioned, uh A D Us was, was focused on a lot. Uh, and, and term, and you will probably see some kind of uh set of changes from the planning commission in the near term at, at the city council level uh for approval. We have a, a subcommittee working on that, uh as Ms. Sawyer or Commissioner Sawyer had mentioned. Uh, there's also a reference to the Forest Hill Plan and the need to do that as part of this whole effort. And uh certainly, the military has had a role to play in uh the housing and the life of our community, and that, that shouldn't be ignored either. Um, I would also point out that Commissioner Boyle was part of the Housing Committee. And uh so her work is, and her say is, I think, enmeshed in all of this, uh as we've talked about this. I think the um comments that by uh Councilmember Tomlinson are, are very valid as it relates to uh the theater. I, when we uh were asked a couple of years ago about uh goals for the city council, I wrote city council said, well, develop that place behind the theater and get it going. Well, we're still thinking about it, and uh as Mr. Driscoll said, maybe there is a way to uh, to work that out. So I think that's kind of a summary from what I can remember, Mr. Mayor. I'll leave some to you.
All right, thank, thank you very much. So, um, a lot of great comments, I've been trying to uh capture them. So what I heard, well, first of all, I have, as uh um Commissioner Boyle, Councilmember McAdams, I may be missing one or two people here on this Zoom that are part of the Housing Advisory Group, and then, of course, our wonderful staff. And this is a culmination of, I think, about nine months worth of work with uh Barrett and Driscoll, so thanks to David and Beth for this. And so being part of this, I've seen this mature in a very, uh, very good direction, absolutely, and a great presentation. So kudos all around. Um, well, I'll start with a couple of high-level things. We've uh, we've acknowledged this is a hard nut to crack. Quite simply, it's, we knew it wouldn't be easy going into it, and after we've studied it for all this time, we still realize it's uh not going to, not going to be easy. Um, but I think we've, uh, you know, uh, as far as where we go from here, what I did not hear was anybody object to these steps, these, these actions. In fact, pretty much heard the opposite. Um, as far as uh working on all these actions, and that's up to our consultants and staff to decide, I think, given our resources, um, how to best move forward. I've heard comments that uh we'd like to move on projects, we'd like to see things done. And well, that won't be easy either, so, but I think the bias here is to uh find some things where we can really focus on. Now, I was wondering about the Lighthouse Cinema parking lot, and just wondering whether it would be useful to go ahead and assume we have a water meter and then, and start walking through a um, a plan as to how, um, and find um housing develop, a nonprofit developer that would be interested in working with us and, and to step through what the, on at least a conceptual basis, what that would look like. So we're ready if and when we have a water uh meter, we have water that we're, we're able to move forward. Um, I also heard comments about, let's not put plans that are just going to sit on the shelf for a long time. So I think obviously we need to be very mindful, and if we start down a route and it doesn't look like it's going very far or very fast, then let's put it to, to the side. I heard that the R three um zoning is going to be, we have to be very careful, bunch of mine feel. you, we have to be very careful. Bunch of minefields with the, with the R three voter initiative, grandfathering trees, historic structures. So that sounds like that needs to be really very carefully worked out. I um, know what I didn't hear, and I started this way back and talking about housing, um, the phrase mixed use. And that didn't make it into this um, final cut. And I'm still trying to figure out why mixed, um, you know, maybe this Forest Hill specific plan, maybe we need to focus on buildings that apply commercial buildings. What, what's, what are the impediments for property owners of commercial buildings to put in mixed use? Um, obviously um, cost. And if there's old buildings, they're probably not earthquake um, uh, compliant today. But uh, anyhow, it's just a, it's something that I didn't hear. Um, on the next, next steps, um, the first bullet is hear feedback from you and the community, you being this the planning commission and the city council and the community. So um, so from what I heard, uh, David, that you were going to update the, the webpage. And then I think we just solicit any other um, additional feedback on where we are today. And then, and quickly focus on move forward on near term. And I heard uh, the, the midterm actions. Well, I heard people wanted all the actions to happen simultaneously. Yeah. Well, we'll, we'll see. Um, I, I think maybe start, start on the things that look like we can have some easy wins or at least not so difficult and, and um, and see some progress. Um, the housing element, um, I'm still unsure as to how the hu- housing element is going to help us um, achieve affordable housing. So um, but we have to do it. I know that. So are those my thoughts, uh, observations? What's, someone else wants to weigh in? And um, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Schaefer. Give us some wrap-up thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we really appreciate all the feedback and the support for the work that we have been doing. And our intention is to proceed with, in particular, um, the density bonus um, ordinance because that's something that's in our current housing element as one of the programs that we intended to complete. So it's always helpful to try to finish up on the projects in our current housing element before we start our new housing element. And it also demonstrates to the state that we're serious about needing some of the goals and plans that we have. Um, so we will be um, bringing things to you, David. I don't know if you want to mention anything else. I have um, information that I will start um, providing um, to the council in June. I'll do a summary housing monitoring report and I'll give you some information on some of the work that we've done with ADUs. And I'll touch on some of those water entitlement questions that council members had as well as part of that report to try to explain that. Um, otherwise, I really appreciate everyone's participation this evening. And it's been really uh, an exciting time to talk about and think about all of these issues. So thank you.
And, and thank you and to everybody. I think we're well positioned for the future and we'll, we will try to crack this nut. We will. I'm confident. So thank you again. Everybody have a pleasant evening. Good night. Meeting adjourned.